Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call the meeting for the City Council for the City of India, the closed session, to order. Can we have roll call, please?
For the record, all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Furman.
And Mr. Furman is on his way back from Washington DC and will be here hopefully if he can make the meeting. And that will get onto public comments. Anybody wishing to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Do we have anybody that wishes to speak or any anybody that's said anything?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay. With that then, we'll adjourn to closed session to consider item 3.1 and 3.2 and we'll be back at 5 o'clock.[186.25]
Turn it on, wait, and then afterwards then you just turn it. Left, 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 right, yeah. I'm just
Good evening, we're gonna call the meeting in order for the city of Indio for the Indio Water Authority and also the Indio Electric Finance Authority, Wednesday, January fifteenth at five o'clock, can we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Benjamin Wiedron.
Present.
Councilmember Oscar Ortiz.
Present.
Mayor Protem Elaine Holmes.
Present.
And Mayor Glenn Miller.
Present.
And Councilmember Wayman Furman is absent today.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to number, item number two, which is invocation, we have our very own Stephen Sloate from the Coachella Valley Christian Church is gonna lead us in invocation, if you'd like to rise with us, please.
Please bow to me in prayer. Gracious and almighty Lord, we are grateful, God, for all that you do for us. Grant, we pray, that these council members and the people of Indio would acknowledge you and seek to live in a manner that reflects our accountability to you. We ask now for your blessing on this Indio City Council meeting. We ask you to oversee the discussions and to guide each of their decisions. May you be pleased by all that takes place here this evening. I ask for your blessing upon each member of this council, on the city management team, and on all who serve on the city's staff. Bless as well, dear Father, those who serve to protect and care for us and keep them safe. Give them excellent judgment in their duties and bless them as, and their families, with your constant care. I also request that you bless all the people who live and work in Indio. I ask for your continued blessing upon these United States of America. We ask all these things in your excellent name, amen.
Amen. Yacil, please stay standing, we have a very special guest gonna give us our flag salute. Avery Feliciardo from Roosevelt Elementary School's gonna come up. Avery is a ten-year-old and serves as the vice president of her school's student council, she is passionate about softball, plays on a travel team, competing regularly, a big fan of the Dodgers, go Dodgers! Avery enjoys attending their games, in the future, she hopes to attend UCLA, pursuing a career in medicine. Avery, please lead us.
Please place, please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. We got a little swag bag, hold on, let me come down. Oh, let's go over here, we got a little picture, thank you. All right, thank you very much, with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is the city attorney report on closed session, Stephen?
Thank you, Mayor, we have no reportable action on tonight's closed session.
Thank you, with that, we move on to the youth advisory council, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Glenn Miller and city council members, my name is Jalissa Cornejo and I'm the youth advisory council's, youth advisory council's publicist. Since our last meeting, Yak has participated in several events here in Indio. Our Yak, our Yak members volunteered at Indio's annual tree lighting, where we helped distribute toys to kids, pass out Santa hats, and help manage the line for its photos of Santa. It was such a fun experience getting to interact with families here in the community and seeing all their excitement as well. We look forward to participating next year. Our Yak members also attended the Indio Tamale Festival, where we had a great time selling merchandise and eating tamale's. Our members also assisted in putting together baskets for our local seniors to help them out during the holidays. Together, we hand-delivered the baskets to residents of the Christianson Apartments. It was very rewarding to see the reactions to their baskets and we hope we can help them out again in the future. Finally, we secured a directing change program mini-grant to bring suicide prevention and mental health awareness to teens through short film projects, which, which will be presented to you in the near future. This concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, very, very informative, thank you for attending, and if you'd like to leave a little bit later, if you'd like to stay, that's up to you, so please let us know if you decide to. City manager, Mr. Montgomery?
No reports this evening, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And then also, we have number seven, which is the city council conflict of interest disclosure, I know Mr. Gudron has to abstain on ten thirteen, anyone else need to abstain on anything? Okay, with that, we'll move on to city council reports on meetings and attending for the government code, and we'll go with Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor, today, I actually just got back from Washington DC, me and councilmember Furman were out there for, for the signing of the Chequalla National Monument. So this designation will help protect over six hundred thousand acres of desert lands from mining and development. Our hopes is that this will help maintain the health of our desert ecosystem, help preserve cultural sites for our local tribes, and provide more resources for our community to be able to enjoy our public lands. I have one request for our council, request for support to bring back an agenda item. So I'd like to discuss solutions for the issue of corporations buying up housing supply in our city, which seems to be an issue nationwide, but also in our region. I've been hearing from our community members that they're constantly getting calls and cash offers for their homes, and there's concern that our local families are not able to compete with these corporations in the housing market. I think we can really help our families in this housing crisis by limiting the ability of large corporations of buying single-family homes. I've had this conversation with many residents and real estate agents, and I think we have, we could have a strong community support for making sure our single-family homes are going to families and giving them the opportunity for homeownership and building generational wealth, instead of having large corp, large companies have that benefit at the expense of our families. I'd like to request an agenda item be brought back to discuss solutions to limit large corporations from buying single-family homes here in Indio. I do believe there are some policies we can implement to legally provide these policies for our residents, so.
Thank you, what's the pleasure of the council?
I mean, I think we can look into it, I think there's probably, well, I, I, we need, I need more information to make that decision, I understand, I understand where it's coming from, I understand the need. I too have spoken with many of the, of our folks out there who have just really struggled trying to buy a home, and, and so, it's something I think we need to at least talk about.
So, that's a good time.
I concur with the same thing, I had had a discussion way before I had, came on council, that we have some homes that are being purchased ten or twelve at a time in a particular neighborhood. Not just the short-term rental issues, but the, these are big corporations that are not even here, and it's, it is some sort of an impact, but I do agree with Ms. Holmes that we should at least evaluate it. And obviously, something's come forth by councilmember Ortiz, that I think we should at least review it and discuss it.
Yeah, I'm good with looking into what it is that we can do to make sure the four, homes are affordable for our residents. Mr. Montgomery, I don't know about bringing back a, an item, what would you suggest concerning, it sounds like the council really wants to hear what the options are before we get into something?
Yeah, some base information is critical, and councilman Ortiz shared some of these ideas with me, and we have saw from the county the database that shows all of the ownership. We believe we can query that, we haven't dove into it yet today, but we now received it today to see how many are there, so the initial report could be by email to indicate that we have, you know, what, what level of problem do we have? And then perhaps with the city attorney and I, maybe it's the second meeting of February, can bring back a couple of options, you could also give us some ideas. Then there'd be a subsequent meeting for more of a meaty flesh-out of maybe the one that you prefer us.
Then there would be a subsequent meeting for more of a meaty flesh-out of maybe the one that you prefer us to research further.
Yeah, because I think it's, it's going to be difficult. And part of it is, you know, property rights are, are unique in themselves, because people buy their properties and can sell them. You, you don't want to limit somebody's home and investment, but at the same time, we also want to look at how we can be more affordable to some of the residents out there. People are buying multiple ones. How do we, how do we look into it to make sure that everybody has a fair chance to be able to seek that opportunity? You know, when you're looking at a lot of this stuff, especially now with this horrific fires in LA and all that, where you're going to have a lot of people that are going to be need of looking at houses, it's going to make things a lot more difficult, even a lot more harder to be able to purchase these homes. So our heart goes out to all those people and the prayers to them. But it's something, if you could bring back to us and let us know, and then we can look into how we actually address it before we put, put something together to make sure we have a consensus in with Wayman Furman here, Councilmember Furman. That'll give us another voice on where he'd like to see this go. Yes, Mr. Gudron?
I think it would be important also with this report to find out where we're at with STRs in the city. How many have been issued? How many are in, that have been maybe currently pending? Or maybe, I think it would probably be good if we just had a study session, because this is important. Obviously, there is funds that the city benefits from it, which is important, but there's also needs to be a balance, so we don't end up like some cities where you just went totally out of control.
Yeah, I, I think this needs to be, but also, I mean, you got to remember too, we are the concerts and without, you know, people, we always talk about people want to shop and stay in the City of Indio. If we don't have the homes to be able to provide it, we do not have the hotel beds to be able to do it. That means most of these people are going to go outside the city. So there, there's that balance between the two of it, and with the new interest in Coachella Valley Music and Art Festival, because of the acts, you know, they're at, I think, thirty-five thousand more tickets than they sold all last year already. Because of Lady Gaga, Green Day, and everyone else that's going to be a part of it, that we've got to look at. Do we want more people to stay in Indio and shop at our, our stores, shop in our restaurants? Or, you know, if not, they're going to go out to the other resorts. So this will bring us in more investment than we can, we can be able to do.
You think the, the STR reviewing it and seeing where we're at. The other thing that you mentioned, Mayor Miller, is that we've also seen an influx of people from the fires are staying here.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of people.
A lot of people that normally would be renting their homes are now staying in them because they lost their homes.
Oh, yeah.
So that's a big deal that I think we're going to have a replay of what happened with COVID. They left those big cities to come to our open air, nice environment.
You know, and there's another piece to this as well. As our greater Coachella Valley grows, and particularly at the east end of the valley, and we try to bring in doctors and physicians and nurses and that kind of thing, and, and, and companies. I mean, we talk about economic development and bringing in large corporations or at, at some level, whatever that, that term means, they need a place to stay for a period of a year, eighteen months, two years as well. So, so as with everything, it's a balance. It's a happy medium.
Yeah, I think it's getting in between people's personal property rights and how we balance that with everything we have going on, and especially we're limited with power to be able to build more homes. So, Mr. Montgomery, if you could bring back to us some, some ideas and thoughts, then we can, Oscar, if that's all right with you, then we can kind of correlate how we go forward.
Should we have that conversation at the same time? Because I know you're looking at bringing back some short-term rental and the temporary event stuff.
That's a good time. I bet the time is probably it. I'll bet we're about thirty days away, because we've been working on some changes to the STR ordinance anyway that we'd like to propose to you. It opens the door for this broader discussion, and if we can envelop that into this other request.
We can have that conversation.
Let's shoot for the second meeting in February, if that meets your expectations. Gives us thirty days.
I think we're going to have to. We can't do anything now, because we have the, the concerts coming up, our staff, and they're going to be maxed out.
But I think it's important to see how many STRs we have.
Yeah.
And that's on the line now. That's on our website. We, we can bring back that data and these proposed changes, and again, it opens kind of the window for the discussion that we'll have then.
Anything else?
Yeah, a bit more on the report. I did see that we're not using Zoom meetings now, but I know there's some concern from staff in other cities that have been having issues with people kind of hijacking that process. And so I've asked staff to come back next week with just a report on what the concerns are, so we can share that with the community and weigh out the benefits and issues with Zoom meetings.
Hijack the meetings, you mean, start speaking up in the.
Yeah, just bringing up issues that aren't really relative to the city and kind of just taking up the time, because legally, they are allowed to, right?
Yeah.
And the other one is, I, two issues that, that I've come up with watching how the wildfires are happening. One of the issues that we have out here in the desert is that we have certain invasive species that are spreading all throughout the desert, and it causes more of a wildfire risk. And some of those plants are actually used in a lot of city landscaping. So fountain grass, tamarisk, those have been two of the ones that are spread around like crazy. They use a lot of our water resources, but also cause more of a wildfire danger. And so I wanted to see if maybe our sustainability commission can look at that and see, is there any policies that we can implement to stop, make sure that we're not using those plants in, in our landscaping? And encourage other people not to use them, or may, maybe not allow them in landscaping plans. The other one would be, right now, you know, I, I had a, I used to rent a casita out in Altadena, and that whole neighborhood burned down. There's three homes left. One of them is the home I used to live in. It's left. But the owner is saying, we can't, we're probably not going to go back, because it's so toxic. The land is toxic now because of all the things that have burned down. And so I think we should really start looking at sustainable construction and look at sustainable materials for construction. I think there's probably grants out there from the state of California. This is not an issue that's going to go away, right? And so in floods, in fires, and all these natural disasters, you have, everything from those homes ends up in our water, in our land, in our air. So I would like to see if our sustainability commission can also look at that, to see if there's any grants available to look at researching sustainable construction here within the City of Indio.
And the cost associated, I, I agree. It's, it's, you know, when you look at everything, from your furniture to your floors, all that wonderful, you know, vinyl flooring, that looks like wood, I mean, just everything that's on your roof. It, it's all toxic. At the same time, how does that, you know, what's the comparison in, in terms of cost?
Cost, yeah.
And how more, how much more expensive housing's going to be. So it'll be interesting to see what that.
Yeah, because it could be more affordable. Well, we, we don't really know that price yet, so let's check it out and see what processes.
We can look with that, and they can work with the Indio Water Authority about the plants and materials that they have. I'm pretty sure Ray has a pretty good palette of different plants they can use, so we can look into that. So not a problem. Anything else, Mr. Ortiz?
That's it.
Mr. Gudron, your first meeting of talking about your events.
Yeah. Um, the break that you gave us for, since the holidays, there was a couple of things. We attended, attended the, the American Legion. They had an event where the Marine Corps, they do it every year. They treat them to a really good dinner. It was well-attended. Councilmember Ortiz and Mayor Miller also showed up. But when I walked away, and I think we mentioned it before, we have a very large population of veterans. We have a lot of veterans that are from the National Guard and throughout the community. And I know we talked about it. I know it came up, and I brought it to the mayor's attention, was, when are we going to go back to that memorial? When are we going to go back and study it again? And I think we need to. I know we've done a great job with the banners, but I asked the mayor, will we do? And he said, well, maybe we should look at it. So I, I think we need to come back and look at it, Mayor.
The Veterans Memorial, that's a part.
Whatever that looks like.
Yeah, we, we did talk about.
I know there was a lot of work done. There was a, we looked into it, and then I think we tabled it.
So, so are you talking about, I was thinking of the nine eleven?
No.
So there was a Veterans.
Yeah, we were going to put it right next to the.
It was a project that the council had requested. They came back with a price, and it was pretty.
Back then, it was, it was, we were going to put it right next to the Armory in that vacant part where the pool was.
That was a long time ago. Okay, yes.
And we talked about it. It was difficult to be able to get in there. We talked about putting another art piece in, but what we were talking about was kind of more the Taj Mahal.
Yeah.
And it really kind of got tabled by the council at the time, because we really didn't have the funding.
And it would be a good idea to, to put it there, because you're going to need parking for celebratory events.
And with the expansion of Jackson Street interchange, the Armory more likely will have to come down when we cut into it. But we're talking about a huge flagpole, kind of like at the county, at the fairgrounds. Where you have the huge flagpole in the middle, and then on each corner of it, you would have the different branches, including the National Guard, because a lot of our residents were in the National Guard. And then were called up, but a lot of time wasn't during wartime, but they did serve. And then the other part would be public safety, police and fire. We'll be able to put that on there and it'd be around and have some benches. So it wouldn't be a hard, big expense, but it would stand out to be able to have, to be able to see that. So I agree with that. I think we do need to celebrate our veterans and all those that served, and first responders and public safety. Something we can look at.
I think you're referencing the City of La Quinta's.
Well, they're referencing a few of them, Indian Wells, La Quinta, Coachella, Ranch Mirage.
They're all a little bit different.
They all have a different take on it, but being the largest city in the valley, the second seat to the county, I think they're looking, I don't know, maybe something as, as simple as what Mayor Miller mentioned.
Yeah.
The other thing is meeting with some of the business merchants that have gone out, especially in the downtown area, they asked about street sweeping. How are we managing it with all the dust and whatnot? I thought there was dust control, because we're, we're having to do that. So I think more of a, an education as to how we're doing it would be good. There's a lot of activity going downtown, which is nice, but that's one of the things that, other than that, the complaints were very little. And it wasn't even a complaint. It's just a, a question of more of an education. And I'm assuming as more activities continue to go downtown, I'm assuming we're going to require maybe bi-weekly cleanings or weekly cleanings. I mean, that would be great if we end up doing that. And I know Miguel and them have been out there, but it's just a question. It's just something that they get back, and there was no complaints. I didn't hear much of anything. So, which is nice. The other thing would be the MyIndio app. I know the MyIndio app, Code Enforcement started it, but it's not just the Code Enforcement app. If you understand that app, in many communities, it's being used for other things. I mentioned it to the city manager in Jonathan and, and even the mayor. I think it's time, the way things are going. The public now with technology and with COVID has learned to communicate a lot, and it's a simple app to use. It's information. I think you need to look at including public works. I think it would help water when there's water leakage and whatnot. I'd rather have the, the community have access to be able to report those things. And again, at the end, it's staff that manages it and then addresses it, you know, stop signs that are, can't be seen because a, a tree is blocking the public or the street light is out. Now, the, there is a link right now with IAD. It's really easy. It takes about three minutes to report a street light. That street lights are on, there's no meters. We get charged whether that street light is on or off, but then sometimes we might have a public tree that's blocking its view to be able to light up the street. So I think it's time that we should look at it, council. It's, I don't think it's a matter of, obviously, the team that we have to evaluate and come back and say, we're going to finally expand it, because I think it's time. That's, that's my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gudron. Mayor Protem Holmes?
All right. Happy New Year, everyone. It seems like forever since we've sat up here, so quite a few things that, that went on. So I, I'll start with my Coachella Valley Conservation Commission. So, you know, talking about the tamarisk trees, those, those things just drink water faster than a running faucet. So I know that there are several organizations out there that, that are trying to take those trees out, and it's very difficult, because they have a life of their own and they keep growing, and, and it's amazing. So I, I can't imagine where, where planting any, I haven't seen any of them in Indio, but, but I know that they're a huge problem. So thank you for bringing that up. One of the things of note, items of note from the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, we acquired two parcels. So it's almost a hundred and fifty acres in the upper Mission Creek Big Morongo. That's something that we've been working on even before my time for about fifteen years. It came with a price tag of one point seven million, but it's just, it's something that completes an area and it leaves that particular area by Big, Big Morongo Canyon Conservation Area, open to the public and trails and so on and so forth. With that becomes, you know, issues of, of monitoring the trails and some of the trash issues and the homeless issues, but I think we agreed on the, on the commission, the importance of preserving that. So for something that took that long, it was finally executed. Let's see. I had, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to go to the El Baskets Learning Center. That's right here on SMUR. And that's, that's evolving into a really interesting place, which is to say that from an educational standpoint, it, it really, it really helps people. In this case, they were two people, actually brother and sister, that, that had, had received through what, what I would call sort of a version of, of homeschooling. But, but the teachers are, are certificated. They're in every way certified. And so these, these two people completed their high school diploma, and then they're going to, to go on to additional. And they have, they have K through twelve education there, small groups, as well as adult education in there. And this particular couple was, was graduating from high school. Again, it was a brother and sister, and it was really great to see, and great to see the families, and really nice to see that initiative here in, in our city. Any way that we can help people get their education and therefore succeed, I think is, is terrific. Let's see, what else do we have here? Shields ribbon cutting. Wasn't that exciting? A hundred years. I can't even imagine what, what this place looked like, but it was a farming community. And everything they've come through and, and, and all the issues, and if you just think of the issues that have occurred in the last hundred years and what they've had to deal with, with their date farming. What a great family, what a great organization, great restaurant. Really, really happy to be able to celebrate one hundred years. Especially since not too long ago, and I think you'll speak to this, we almost lost them. I mean, they're an icon in this community. And whenever you say, where do you want to meet? Everybody says Shields. For breakfast or lunch, it's Shields. So, so really, really a great testament to longevity in our community. Let's see, what else do we have? Thank you, Chief Tully, over the holiday, for everything that you did to keep us all safe, New Year's Eve. You know, there's always a few people that, that, you know, just are a little bit more careless than they need to be, so I know you had programs that you rolled out there. Thank you. I appreciate that. Attended the, along with the mayor, the Desert Association of Realtors. So, you know, that's part of my ear as well in understanding what's going on in the community. They had their awards dinner just the other night. Attended the Journalism Foundation lunch yesterday, and that was very interesting for me. When you talk about local generalism, I mean, we are all, you know, familiar with the desert sun, but certainly watching the TV news, CBS. Several folks and some young people received scholarships, and they were awarded for their efforts, and looking at the next generation of reporting here in our community, particularly as our community grows. I was installed as president for the East Valley Reclamation Authority, so that, looking forward to that. And I, those of you, I went on a little trip on Saturday, because I saw cranes across Golf Center Parkway. And I was so excited to see Avenue Forty-four Bridge as being worked on. And I know that's something we've wanted, those of us particularly that live in the north end. We take that across to Monroe, take that across to Jackson, as the Great Thoroughfare, and, and it is being worked on. It took us a while, and then we had to deal with a burrowing owl, so, owl. So thank you to the city for taking such good care of our little burrowing owl family and making sure they're safe and sound. So very excited to hear that. And then something I wanted to bring up. Team, I don't know, we're all here, right? When we, the fair's coming to town in February, and we used to have Queen Scheherazade, Al, I know you'll remember that. Queen Scheherazade, they'd come in, the queen and the court, they'd, they'd talk about, you know, themselves, their background, their, their schooling, what's going on with the fair, all the different things going on in our community. It was really a lot of fun, and they'd pass out pins. You know, I've heard, not in my time, that people in the downtown used to, used to dress up. Ben, you might know that. I, I'm not sure about that. But I think it would be absolutely wonderful to bring Queen Scheherazade and her court back to talk about all the fair and everything that's going on and all the events, so.
We could, except they disbanded it.
They disbanded it?
They disbanded. Remember the last time Lippi was here, she was, she told us that they disbanded it for, during, after, right before COVID. Yep.
The court? Well, then we need to bring it back. Dr. Chris, that was cool.
The, Chris, who happens to be a member of my Rotary club, mentioned that they had a challenge, some challenges, but they never really, I think it's, I think we could ask. But to answer your question, yes. During festival days, every merchant, every employee would do their best, and maybe with our marketing team, Jessica can challenge everybody to dress up and you can do prizes. Decorate their offices.
Decorate their offices, sounds good. But, I mean, I mean, it was great, because these kids used to go, they used to, they used to compete at, at an educational level, and, I mean, I just thought it was a great experience for them. So I'm all supportive of bringing it up to someone. And those are the end of my comments. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Gudron, you said you had something else you'd like to discuss?
I've mentioned that there was an unfortunate thing that happened to our sports park. The construction site was a victim of vandalism and so forth. So a few years back, we looked at an ordinance to help encourage some proactive to deter crime by lighting, cameras, and obviously, security. We've had some businesses in the city that are, that have been built. Mathis would be one. TKB, they took initiative to be proactive to deter it. But I think we, I think it's time, because of so much building. The City of Irvine, I believe the City of Costa Mesa, has an ordinance to help encourage building and be conditioned and stuff that we look at, at the direction of the police department. And again, it's, it's to help them deter the crime. Some contractors actually already put a loss in their budget. Will invest that loss into preventing it, because the more we can prevent it, the less opportunity for people to come in and even commit those type of activity and crimes. We did take a hit at, at the sports park, so I think instead of just waiting to be the victim, we need to be proactive. And I think an ordinance, as other cities have done, that should be looked at, city manager, that would be my recommendation. Again, it's some fact-finding and see how it benefits Indio and benefits our businesses, which in return benefits our community.
You said the ordinance would require like cameras and lighting at construction.
You said the ordinance would require like cameras and lighting at construction sites?
And security, depending on certain criteria that has to be.
The size of the project and everything.
Absolutely.
Something I guess we can work with and work with the planning commission and the chief to see if there's something we can do there. Anything else, Mr. Gutron?
No, sir.
Thank you. And my reports, thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. As all my committees were dark, except the East Valley Reclamation Authority, and as Mayor Protem Holmes said, she was elected president, we rotated along with Valley Sanitation District, two members each. And we look at ways to look at recyclable water and opportunities to utilize water in a more efficient way. So we got a report, we were able to change positions, okay, do, and the mayor Protem was elected president. And so we had that. And also, we're looking at how we can recycle water, and we're looking at the plan, and we're about 70% through on where we're going to be able to use recycled water and how the plant would be able to be able to utilize about a million gallons of water each day. And then those would be taken back and taken over to either the golf course at Eagle Falls or for the landscape around that area or our golf course. So that plan is in place, and hopefully we'll be able to get a system put in place to use recycled water, which we don't now. All the water that's recycled out of Valley Sanitation District is actually dumped back into the channel and goes towards the Salton Sea or back into the aquifer. So we're looking at how we can use it and get some of these properties off of potable water. Want to thank the staff first off. There's so much goes on and our staff does an amazing job. So when you see these films, the movies that are center stage, our Tamale Festival, you look at the Shields Date Garden 100 year anniversary for Shields Date Garden, Wellness Mode, ribbon cuttings, that all comes from our staff and they're doing an amazing job, working with our businesses and work within our community to make sure that not only are they recognized, but also that we bring more people into the fold of the city of Indio. So my hat's off to the staff. It's a lot of work on a continual basis when a lot of our staff is out working during the day. They're not only working during the day, but at the night, too, because a lot of these events are night or Saturday and Sunday. So my hat's off to them. I was at the Riverside County Office of Education. They're making the new conference center. Will be a 400-seat center off of Calhoun. That had the groundbreaking, it'll be utilized for educational purposes, not only for the city of Indio, but for the whole Coachella Valley as a whole, to be able to bring in different organizations to utilize it. So my hat's off to the Riverside County Office of Education. And then also, the Palm Springs International Film Festival was over at Indio High School. They did a movie called Robert Trevino Liked It. And it was a movie about a young lady who had a falling out with her father and clicked on a social link that said Robert Trevino, which was her father, who didn't give her the time of day. And it happened to be another gentleman that happened to be 70 years old, and they became very good friends. And we'll tell you the story because you should look at it, but it was very well done. Interaction with the producer, the director and the writer with over 700 of Indio students that came from all our high schools and local high schools to be able to see not only the premiere, but also talk to them about the film industry and how they can get involved. So great opportunities for them. Thank you to everyone that was involved in that. The city of Indio is very proud to have associations with other agencies and groups, and the Palm Springs International Film Festival and society were able to help us there. And then lastly, the Living Desert, I did that World Desert Day. It's the second annual. All the cities were involved, along with the local elected officials. Mr. Ortiz was there for Assemblyman Greg Wallace and also Assemblyman Gonzalez and Bog and everyone, kind of reaching out to the Living Desert about what we can do to preserve more land and make sure that we're doing what's best for our desert as we continue to grow, which we will. So it just gave us an opportunity to show what an amazing desert we have, but at the same time, how we work intertwined with the Conservation Commission for SEVAG and also the Living Desert. And then lastly, I'd like to, at the end of the meeting, I'd like to do a moment of silence for all those who've been affected by the fires and the deaths and all the destruction that's gone on. We pray for them, make sure that there are some solutions to them and that they can get some solace and hopefully rebuild quickly. And then also, we lost a sheriff deputy, Timothy Corlou. If we can do just a moment of silence at the very end for a few minutes to make sure they recognize the sacrifices that they do, our public safety personnel, or their everyday protectance from police and fire and our sheriff department, and we want to thank them for all they do. So with that, we will move on to item 91, which is the approved nominations for reappointment of commissioners and appointments to fill vacancies on boards and commissions after a general municipal election. Sabdi, do you have anything to add to this? I know that we have appointments and some changes. We have commissioners on board, if you can see. And you want me to finish or do you want to go ahead?
Please go ahead and state the changes on the names, please.
Okay. So I had for my Citizens Finance Committee, I had Mr. Jose Santos was going to be my committee member. He is now swapping and going on the planning commission for Ben Gutron, and I am taking Fernando Lopez to be my CFAC member. So those are the two changes right now on it. I will have Fernando Lopez for CFAC. Community Services will be Armand Ordian. Mobile Home Fair Practices will be Pete Chris. Planning Commissioner Gloria Franz. Public Arts Commission EJ Newmeyer. And then Sustainability Commission will also be Mr. Pete Chris. And would you like to be New Year's?
No, I can do it.
Okay.
And obviously, I concur that we did, and I ended up appointing a recommendation is Jose Santos. He will be taking the representation for the planning commission. Mr. Ken Weller will be the Citizens Finance Advisory Commission. Ricardo Ressuenio will be Community Services Commission. The Home Practices, for Practices, it will be under the Sustainability, or did we decide? What was it? Was it what we're gonna do?
Who's that?
For the Mobile Home Practices Commission. I think Sabia gave you the message.
So you have Sandra Verdugo also serving as?
So we were doing under the Sustainability Commission, Sandra Verdugo will do that. And Gil Marujo will take the Public Arts Commission. And most of all, those people are present here tonight.
Yes. So we'd like to make that recommendation for both myself and Ben Gutron. Then we'd like to make that motion.
And I'll make the motion to start with, sure.
I'll second. Second. All right. Please vote. All those in favor? And if anyone is against? Pass unanimously 4-0. And we have a couple of the commissioners, and we have more that are going to come, but the ones that are forbidden, myself, if you'd like to call any of them up, that would be fine, Ben, to introduce themselves. And Sabdi, wouldn't you be swearing them in at their meetings?
At their first meeting, yes.
Okay.
So Mr. Ken Weller, our CFAC's representative? Ken? Yes, please.
You can't yell from the audience, you know that. And if they'd like to come up, they can, if they don't, that's fine.
It's been a long time since I stood up here with you guys. Thank you for recommending that I come back to the city and try to help with the Finance Commission. I really enjoy working with all of you. I see a lot of progress here that, since I've been here, that makes the city look very, very nice. You guys have done a good job. So I hope in the Finance Committee, we can help finance those projects that you want to do. And that, I think, is my goal, is to see how we can get that done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you for serving.
Ricardo Ressuenio, Community Services Commission.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ricardo Ressuenio. I've been a lifetime resident of the city of Indio. I've been involved a lot in the city, but never at the hall. Brian could probably attest to that. But I'm here to actually be the voice of our community, be the voice of the city, to help kind of intermittent things that, before they get to a problematic situation. So, here I am, thank you for appointing me and be talking to you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Jose Santos, please. He would be our planning commission.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jose Santos. Born in the city of Indio, became, once I became an adult, came back to the city of Indio, became a resident in 2017. I want to thank the councilmember of mayor for the opportunity for this, to be a part of the planning commission and basically help the city of Indio, the residents and the council in future developments and projects within the city and the growth. Thank you.
And thank you for your service to the sheriff department. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. And Mr. Gil Marujo, the Public Arts Commission.
Good evening and happy New Year to all. My name is Gil Marujo. I, as some of these other people have attested, then I was born and raised here in Indio, California. Been here for quite a long time. I've seen a lot of changes in this city, as well as how it's developed. I have a lot of history background in this, in the city, and I'm here to help whatever I can to promote the city of Indio. I have a lot of pride that it's been developed here, mainly because of the fact that I taught at Indio High for 37 years. I've worked through the district for a number of years as well in terms of outreach. My last assignment was, I was the district facilitator for Sanz Unified School District, which meant I was the community person, one who handled pretty much any community-based organization in the valley. So I do have a lot of background in that regards, and I'm working through the arts. And you mentioned the festival. Well, I can attest to you what it used to be back in the 50s and the 60s, how big it was here in the valley. It was huge. We had a great amount of pride. The city was, city literally dressed up. Kids were all dressed up. You can go into the festival and you could see everybody actually being part of the whole commitment and being part of who we are here in Indio. And when they say it's the date festival, that's what's important. I know sometimes people misconstrue the idea of a palm tree to a date tree, not even close. We're talking date trees. This is what's big here in the valley. We do have palm trees, don't get me wrong, but the idea behind it came from the date festival back when it first started, years ago, even before I was born. But anyway, I'm here for any assistance I can provide you, history that I can provide you, as well as commentary. So with that in mind, thank you very much, and I'll be more than happy to serve on this commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Sandra Verdugo, some short words.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Verdugo. I was born and raised here in Indio, California. I have three children who are also born and raised here in Indio, California, and I look forward to working with all of you and helping in whatever way I can.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you, Ms. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item number two now, which is appointment of Christian Rodriguez Seja to the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission nominated by Councilor Oscar Ortiz. Mr. Ortiz?
Yeah, Mr. Seja is my planning commissioner, and the Mobile Homes Commission doesn't meet very often, so I'm just having him fill in for that one there, but he's very knowledgeable on the issues.
Okay. We have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All right. Please vote. Pass unanimously 4-0. With that, we'll move on to the next item, which is appointment of Jerome Adams to the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission nominated by Councilmember Wayman Furman. Mr. Furman's not here, but would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Are they here?
I don't.
Are they here?
Adams? No? Okay.
I'll make a motion based on information.
We have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Please vote. Pass unanimously 4-0. With that, we'll move on to item 94, which is appointment of Felipe Ortiz to the Planning Commission nominated by Mayor Protem Elaine Holmes. Ms. Holmes?
Yes?
Come on down. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. My name is Felipe Ortiz. For those that don't know, I was born and raised in Colombia. Came to the United States when I was 17 years old. After two years of trying to learn the language and the culture, I decided to do something better and then joined the Marine Corps. So I was stationed in Turner on Palms from 2016 to 2020. While I was in the Marine Corps, I was able to meet my wife. She's from Indio, she was born and raised here. So when I got out, I moved to Indio in 2020. So I have lived here since then. I love the community. I love being part of it, part of the Indio Sunrise Rotary Club. I also like, Mr. Mayor said, I worked for a senior member of Wallace, so I work in politics, but I also like community service. So I also, I was part of the first class of the Indio Leadership Academy back last year. So I'm very thankful and thank you, Mayor Protem Holmes, for nominating me to the Planning Commission. It's an honor.
Make that motion to appoint Mr. Ortiz.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please vote. Pass unanimously 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
And I see Mr. Michael Curry's here, also a member of Assemblyman Wallace's staff. Thank you for joining us. And with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have items 10 through 19, but we are going to take all of them except 1013, where Councilmember Gutron needs to recuse himself because he has his home within a certain distance of the actual item. So does anybody have any questions or comments on any of the other ones besides 1013? Somebody like to make a motion?
So.
We have a first by Councilmember Ortiz.
I'll second.
Or by Gutron. We have a second by Councilmember Ortiz. First and second. Any other discussion? Okay. Got to get ready to vote. Anything, Sabdi? Okay.
There we go.
There we go. Pass unanimously 4-0. With that, we'll move on to item 1013. Do we need to have Mr. Gutron remove himself?
You'll take the walk, Ben.
You know, I've been removed by better people than you. Usually takes care.
Item. Okay, so item 1013, is there any comments or concerns on this one?
I would just say, mayor, that the reason for the recusal is this project passes right in front of, near where he lives.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I said, yeah, it was in the distance of his home.
Sorry.
No, not a problem. So, and it's an association of governments, project that lives, goes across in front of his house. Any questions, comments? Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
First by Councilmember Ortiz, second by Mayor Protem Holmes. Please vote. Passes unanimously 3-0. With that, we'll move on to our next item. Would the Youth Advisory Council like to stay or would you like to go?
I can stay.
Okay.
Nice.
We've got a couple. Thank you for staying.
What a brave young lady.
Yes.
Yes.
If you stay, you have the comment.
Yes. Now we're going to get, move on to item number 11, which is the Administrative Items Resolution 2025-01 of the Indio Electric Finance Authority, modifying the surcharge of electric service with the boundaries of the city of Indio. Mr. Montgomery, you handling this for us, sir?[1693.60]
Yes, with some assistance, but Mayor, thank you. And you are sitting as the board of the Indio Electric Finance Authority for this matter. Well aware as the board that in partnership with I A D formed the authority for the purposes of enhancing the infrastructure in the community. And this partnership with I A D, I wanted to state at the get-go has been very productive. We have very high hopes for what this will bring for the whole community by way of reliability, redundancy to the electrical grid. As evidenced by a letter that you all received today from I A D, the partnership is going well. The matter before you is an adjustment to what was approved previously and, and we have some explanation, explanation for that.
Okay.
You see that in the staff report. I wanted to introduce Brian Forbath, attorney at Stradling Law, who has been threading the needle on all these matters of the I E F A. I thought he would be the best to explain the matter, but I'm certainly available for any questions or any comments that you might need from me, but Mr. Forbath can have the balance of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Appreciate Brian Forbath from Stradlin Yaca. Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of me this evening. So I think Mr. Montgomery set the stage very well. Just reminder, back in June of twenty twenty-three, after lots of negotiations and cooperative work together, the city and I A D formed the Indio Electrical Financing Authority. It's the body that you said is the board of today. Back then, in, in July of nineteen of twenty twenty-three, that's when the board first adopted the surcharge at essentially half a penny and change each year, point five five cents each year surcharge. You know, and then as we move forward, that surcharge became effective in November first of twenty twenty-three and started showing up on people's bills in December. And then the first money started flowing in to the bond trustee in January, in fact, excuse me, in February of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, excuse me. So what happened was that, you know, the city all along planned to issue bonds secured by these revenues. And we worked cooperatively hand in hand with I A D in sort of analyzing the financial revenue stream that was going to be able to, available to support these bonds with I A D. And I A D is part of this process, helped sort of verify what they thought at the time, where the boundaries of the city, all the customers within the city at the time. And we used those kilowatt hour estimates to size our bonds off of. And essentially, we sized it off of a revenue that these kilowatt hours were going to produce, about four point six million dollars of annual revenue. And that would support about a little over four million dollars of debt service and provide what we call like fifteen percent coverage on that. Well, as the, you know, as you can imagine, we started collecting these revenues in February and they come in monthly. And it took a little while to figure that something was a little off. They were, the revenues that were coming in were lower than anticipated. And it's, you know, given electricity, it's sort of hard to determine and tell if it's the weather, if it's usage or what's going on. But by the end of the summer came around, it seemed clear that something was off. And so we went back and, and, you know, worked cooperatively with I A D. And as it turns out, the facts were, are, as we believe it, is that I A D was initially over-inclusive in what they gave us, gave the city as the accounts that were within the boundaries of the city. So there was, in their original numbers, there were accounts included in their estimates that turned out not to be within the city. So we weren't really levying the surcharge on it. So hence, the revenues that we were collecting were short of what we need to pay, to satisfy our bond covenants. So the, the bond covenants that we issued, that when we issued the bonds, it requires, there's, part of the security for the investors in these bonds is there's a covenant of this board that says, we're going to set rates and charges each year to provide at least one hundred and ten percent of debt service. Revenues will be at least one hundred and ten percent of the debt service in the bonds. And the bonds originally sized with a little bit of cushion on that too, to one fifteen. So we're here before you tonight because based on sort of the current estimates and revenues, we are not going to satisfy that rate covenant. And the action before you is to unfortunately increase the surcharge so that we satisfy that rate covenant that we've put out there to investors. And again, there was roughly just fifty-nine million dollars of bonds that were issued by the I E F A in order to finance these very important substation improvements to benefit the community. So the recommendation by staff, working with the consultants, to make sure that we've got enough cushion in there, given sort of some of the uncertainty about usage, is that that rate go up to point zero zero nine five cents a kilowatt hour from the point zero zero five five that it's in existence. And that would get us back to sort of what we told investors that we were doing when we did this transaction. And with that, I'm, that's sort of the summary of it all. I'm more than happy to provide any more details about how we got to where we're at, as Mr. Brian can, can too. But that's, that's the action before. So the, and if you decide to move forward with approving this resolution tonight, the rate would be approved tonight, but it would take effect one hundred and twenty days from today. So it would actually start showing up on bills as of May fifteenth and going forward.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? The applicant? Mr. Ortiz?
What homes were included that shouldn't have been included? What areas?
So the, I'll, I'll answer that, thank you. The zip code for Indio, nine two zero zero one or nine two zero zero three, also include areas that are not within the city limits. So it appears from our research, there were forty-seven hundred accounts or meters that have the Indio zip code but aren't under your jurisdiction as the I E F A to be able to impose the surcharge. That is the over-inclusivity that Brian mentions.
Bermuda Dunes.
Bermuda Dunes is the largest.
Rockaway Summit.
Harbor Track, a little bit on the edge of Dillon Road. We found some, a little bit south toward La Quinta. And, you know, it's a significant deficiency because we committed to those that bought these bonds as indicated that we would meet a certain standard. We're not there. And so you never want to tell a board that there isn't tons of choice, but we need to remedy the matter. One way of looking at this is if we had the information that was a little less, that was the inclusive data that we could impose the surcharge upon, the rate would have been this. So it's not any different than the action we would have recommended a year ago. It's just we didn't have all the information at hand to do so at that time. So now we need to, to correct the, the mistake.
Is that good, Mr. Ortiz? Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Is anybody wishing to speak on the side?
I have no comments, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, is anybody, okay. Yeah, Mr. Ortiz?
Can we make sure when this new price goes out to include information on the Ratepayer Assistance Program for low-income residents from I A D?
Absolutely.
And maybe coordinate that with I A D so that?
And in fact, our, our marketing team was ahead of us a little bit on that. They actually did that yesterday, but we want to, we want to continue to remind. And, and I A D's been a great partner on that. They, they are enhancing their marketing efforts as well to advise people. It's understanding it's undersubscribed, meaning they're more eligible out there than are taking advantage of it. So the getting the word out would more than, the assistance that could be provided.
Yeah.
Would more than assist this minor amount, this four dollars here.
That's important.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. Adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one of the Indio Electric Finance Authority, modifying the surcharge for electric service within the boundaries of the city of Indio to point zero 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 nine five cents per kilowatt hour.
First by Mayor Protim. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Ortiz. Please vote. Pass unanimously, four zero. Thank you very much. Thank you for your report, sir. We'll move on to item number eleven-two now. It's the selection, the finalists for the Indio mural number sixteen and authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate and finalize the terms of any agreement between the city and the selected artist with a total budget not to exceed fifty thousand for the mural and a total budget of ten thousand for the lighting. Miguel, are you handling this for us, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I am Miguel Ramirez Cornejo, Economic Development Director. And let's go ahead and get started today. Item eleven point two for Indio mural number sixteen is to choose a finalist. The location of the mural is on the northwest corner of Avenue forty-five and Jackson Street. And on November fourteenth of twenty twenty-three, the Public Arts Commission reviewed nineteen proposals and they recommended two of them. One from Molly Keane and one from Adam Enrique Rodriguez. And we're asking tonight for the city council to select a finalist. Now we'll look at, the first proposed from Molly Keane, she is a muralist based out of twenty-nine palms. The mural that she is proposing is called Indio Twilight. And the theme is a violent, vibrant tribute to, not violent, vibrant tribute to Indio with native plants, a Ferris wheel, hot air balloons, selfie doors, desert landscape, blending some starry night and sunset to represent peaceful nights and dynamic days. The budget for this mural she proposed was fifty thousand dollars. And here is the whole overall scope that will cover that entire wall.
Interesting.
So now we'll go on to number two, Adam Enrique Rodriguez. Adam is based out of Palm, Desert Palm, Desert Hot Springs. I cannot speak. And reflects the vibrant energy of Indio with its iconic buildings and cultural elements like Papel Picado, Hipiñata, native cactus, palms, mountain, with a transition from day to night that celebrates Indio's culture and events and also has a proposed budget of fifty thousand dollars. And this is what the entirety of that mural looks like.
Okay.
So the recommendation is for the council to select a finalist of, of this. Now I do, I should mention that we spoke to the property owner, let them see the two proposed ones, and they did favor one over the other. And that one's the one from Adam Enrique Rodriguez.
Okay. And this will be part of our murals so that we may maintain and taking care of and that? And we have an agreement with them for how long?
It is for until the Public Arts Commission, we do the decommissioning part of it, but it's up there until eternity and which we will maintain as well. And it's a part of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Public Arts Work Plan.
Okay.
Question. Light, lighting, will that be maintained by us or by the?
That will be maintained by us. A part of this recommendation is not just approve the mural, but also approve for up to ten thousand dollars to provide lighting for that mural in which the city would install.
And maintain.
And maintain.
And maintain.
Okay.
And I'm assuming it's the current type lighting that would illuminate it well and all that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ortiz, anything?
I appreciate both of them. So thank you to the artists for providing both of these. I think the first, well, first of all, I think if the property owners favoring the second one, I kind of lean towards that one a bit. The other, not concerned, but just something that I noticed is the first one looks very similar to the one that we have at the Tap House. Has very similar styles, so it looks a little bit repetitive.
Okay.
So I'm kind of leaning towards the second one, but open to hearing your guys' suggestions.
Mayor Protim?
You know what, I'm leaning toward the second one, but I'm looking at the palm tree now. You guys got me thinking, Gil. Is that a date palm in this picture?
Looks like a palm tree, ma.
Needs to be a date palm, right? Hanging from it.
I would just say, make it look like a date tree.
Yes, make it look like a date palm.
Says the city date tree is the date tree.
Well, I think he's, he's doing it off the, the native landscape.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's, they're both here, right? But it's whichever you prefer.
Almost brought in.
Yeah.
And the only native palm tree is the Washingtonian tree. And I, and I learned that from the Alakalanta tribe. That is the na, most native tree is the Washingtonian.
So is this going to be part of our Q R code? And it's going to talk about the artists and all that, along with our, our trail and that? So I mean, if somebody wants to make a motion, I'm fine with item number two.
Quick question regarding murals. I know some of them are, are in some condition, issues that we're trying to deal with. Because I know some people that come out to the city are still favoring the murals that have been worked on. And then the murals that we've had taken down because of challenges that we had are wanting to know if they'll ever come back to be put up again.
So right now, any mural that's going up, we're starting to go into maintenance mode on a lot of our murals. We've been putting up a lot within the last couple of years, but even our previous ones, we have entered into an agreement with the conservator to refurbish some of those and restore some of those and also protect them.
What about the ones we took down?
On the ones that we took down, that wasn't within the scope that we presented. I would have, we would have to go back and, and take a look at which ones were taken down.
That would be important because people still look for them to this day. I mean, good work, but I don't want to forget about those either. Because a lot of local folks and merchants, the business community was really part of the initial ones.
We'd have to find a spot that we could actually put them on and make sure that they're.
There's still a lot of spot on that bridge. So anyways, food for thought, but I concur with number two as far as consensus.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move, motion for item two, which was presented by staff.
And I'll second.
I'll second that.
First by Councilmember Gutron, second by Councilmember Ortiz. Please vote. Pass unanimously, four zero. We'll move on now to item number eleven-three. Thank you, Miguel. Consideration of names for the conference rooms at the new city hall. Mr. Montgomery, you're handling this, sir?
Yes, and I think I'll call this a very fun activity that is being presented for the council to consider naming some conference rooms in the new city hall. While the city hall is, you know, certainly has some months before it'll be constructed, we're working on signage and want to appropriately identify for functionality purposes, as well as just the naming and an opportunity to acknowledge the community in one way, at least six of these conference rooms in, in the building. There has been some informal discussion over the last handful of months. We've talked about perhaps some native plants, names of festivals. But in that discussion with the council, it seemed to center on this opportunity to name these conference rooms after folks that have had a significant impact on the Indio community. We, at your request, asked the Community Services Commission to come up with some names. They wanted to broaden your request and so they wanted to set up a set of names that could be used for parks, roads, facilities. And that is included in your packet as well, as well as the names that have kind of been, let's call them narrowed down to those listed in the staff report. I think, I see now about nine names. If you could provide us direction on this regard, we would commit to make sure that each one of these rooms had a nice photo, had a nice plaque or, or explanation of who that individual was. And that would be the name of the room that we would use for scheduling and functionality purposes. So with that, if, if, if the council is so inclined to provide some direction, we could go a number of ways. If, if there really isn't a desire to, to make that decision, we might default onto naming the conference rooms to the nearest department. We have some departments that are adjacent, some that are nearby. I'm not sure that has as much value, but that's certainly another option to consider. But we need to, we need to name them something.
Yeah.
So with that, Mayor, looking forward to your direction, discussion and, and the direction that we can then proceed with.
Well, you know, we've, we've talked about taking people that have been, I guess you want to say from icons to people that have done things for this city and trying to find places to be able to name, use their name to highlight their, their support of the city or their dedication to the city. And so this gives us an opportunity, if we'd like to use some of these names of, of local individuals who've, who've been instrumental in, in Indio's future and past. You know, where you're looking at all the stuff that comes forward. You know, you hear the names Doug York, Jackie Bethel, who actually appointed me to the Planning Commission when she was mayor. There's a lot of good names. Al McCandless, one of our auto dealers and was very instrumental in being a congressman. And so there's some great names here. And then we can't go wrong by naming other, other opportunities, like, you know, our festivals or different trees. But this gives us a chance to utilize some of these names without changing the things of parks or anything else. So really, what the council thinks. Elaine, why don't you go first?
I, you know, names are fine. And I wanted to sort of add to this, with the new city hall, we need, I mean, I look at these empty walls every time I come into this room and I think we need to utilize those walls. And one way we can do it is we come up, because there's so many names here. I mean, and just in my tenure, I look at Doug York and Cherry and Bruce Clark, my goodness. And yet I'm a different generation from some of these names as well. You know, and certainly we talk about David Hernandez. So, so a little off the subject, but something to consider as we say, well, we want these four or five or six names, is maybe we could have a, a wall of recognition at the new, at the new city hall somewhere that recognize the people that have been influential and a part of the, the city's growth. So, so that suggestion leads to, we can, we can go through some of, some of these names. How many are there? Six, did you say, city manager? Five, six?
Six.
Six. You know, you want me to choose my six?
No, I just want to hear everybody else's.
I just have a question before we get into the conversation. How time-sensitive is this? Because I know Wayman brought up this, the naming conversation when we first started this off and he's not here with us. So could this wait till the next meeting or?
I'd say within the next thirty days would be fine. Perhaps a discussion, a preliminary discussion, and then we finalize it at a meeting where he can attend and also add some input as a, as an idea, unless you want to defer at all.
No, I, I think we ought to have the discussion if we really want to do it with the names. Are, are these the names? I mean, some of the names people know, some of them they don't, some of them are newer. You know, like I said, Dr. Carrion was, you know, an icon here. He's got a lot of things named after him. Do we want to name something after him or some of the other individuals who haven't been recognized? Doug York had, has park and has the other stuff. Cherry, you know, there's a lot of individuals. Ben?
The only thing I was going to say is like with Dr. Ronaldo Carrion, yes, there's a school and there's a street. But also, there's a significant thing that some of these people went beyond just coming and pushing. He created a foundation that helps our community, helps our youth and our community. I, at least with the finalists that you have here, I personally knew six of them, the other ones I didn't. But I do think we need to give gratitude to the founders of our city, our first council. And I do agree with, with Councilmember Holmes, but, you know, Mayor Protim Holmes, excuse me, that there needs to be something to memorialize them, along with the first dollar. But I think it's, it's something unique we need to do, but each one of them. Doug York, I know we removed the gazebo, it's in storage, it would be put at the new, at the municipal golf course. And that'll memorialize him, because at least that's what I, you informed me, that that was the idea to move it there. So I think if we do that, that's going to be great. Because that gazebo was made, handmade by Amish people and brought on a freight train. And I, it was horrible that we thought we'd just throw it in the garbage. But I mean, there's other things that we can do besides city hall. I think we can do that.
So would you like to name them after? So would you like to name them after individuals and, and go off the list and wait till Wa- Wayman gets here? I'm fine with that, too. I know he was, he, it was important to him to be a part of it, so I, I have no problem with that part. Or do we need to give them direction on, is it names or are we going after something else?
I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think we'll defer this then.
Well, I, I, I do like the idea of having, you know, some kind of plaque with the descrip- you know, with information about them. I think that's pretty educational and provides some historical perspective for people that are coming in through our city, so I do like that idea, but I'm still open.
I mean, every single one that here has something of significance.
Yeah.
Mr. Tingman, June McCarroll, who was one of the two in the nation that came up with the, the dividing lines, there's a debate.
And she was a member of the women's club.
She's got a, a plaque on Highway one eleven that's still there on a stone. Leroy Polly was a great person. Jackie Bethel did really well. Doug York. Cherry Tsamashu gave thousands of hours in giving it to the community. Um, and Miss Doc, Mr. Bruce Clark brought the infamous, uh, um, what was that road show with the antique cars coming through India, uh, several times. So each one has given something significant. Uh, I also saw that Pat, Pat Laughlin was there. She wrote tons of books telling stories about India and everything else. I just think that we can probably look at kind of looking at locations throughout all our city buildings and everything, so we don't just do it at one location. Um, I think we can do it.
Yeah, we have some future parks, roads.
Public service facilities, the library. I just think if we're going to do this right, it has to be people from our community. I know that we wanted to name people from other parts of the world and country, but I think we need to name our own.
It's got to be Indio, as I'm concerned as well.
Either Jackie Cochran, I know that I made a, a mention to the museum, they actually put a banner up for her on the military, because she was a great aviator. So, and, so there's a lot of good things. I think we have a, a lot there, and I think if we all put our heads together, we probably could do every, because we have to name them. We just got the list of all these areas we could name them at.
And with Dr. Parkinson, we have all kinds of people that have been, been there, and, and the ones that we don't do, maybe we put a plaque up in, or a, a wall, and we can add to it as people come up and minds come up and talk a little bit about it with a QR code of what they did, so people can look at them while they're in the lobby.
We have developers that come in with projects. They're always looking for suggestions on names of roads, and there's that option. I, I might as a suggestion, and that might be better use of time, and then when the, the Councilman, uh, Furman is here, is if you'd like to email some of the suggestions or if we're missing some names, then when we bring it back, it'll be a little bit more ready and, you know, just, okay, here's where we've narrowed it down to and and let Wayman be a part of that.
We do need the set number though, right? Like what number are we going?
For, if it's just a city hall, and again, there are all kinds of options of other places to put names, but six.
Six or city hall.
So if you could send us six recommendations, uh, for at least this near term, doesn't mean any of these are excluded from future
Yeah.
opportunities.
But for this specific development, we need six.
Yeah, I think we just do six, because I think then we'll start to stretch and let's really think out where we want to do it, because if you're going to honor them, let's make sure it means something. This will be six of our brand new city hall with the conference rooms, and people will be able to know who they are, and then we can find opportunities for some of these other individuals to be able to name some other things we want to, or we can expand if we need to. But this gives at least staff the ability to know what they're going to call those, and we can highlight that and promote that and move on, but you want to move it to the next meeting? Or do you want to move it two meetings out? Cause you're not going to be here possibly at the next meeting.
Maybe, possibly. Um.
Can we do it to second meeting?
I think we send, we, yeah, we, we send city manager an email. We pick our, our six. That may take a couple of iterations to come up with six, but.
Yeah, if you, that would help narrow it, and, and you would know if, if Councilmember were missing what, who they recommended, for example, uh, cause we would, we would present that, um, but I think within thirty days to the question that Councilmember Ortiz indicated, if we want to wait till the second meeting of February, I think that's the longest we'd want to wait, uh, for a couple of reasons, but.
Okay. Um, would you prefer the first meeting of February? We can have Councilmember Holmes, if she's not here, she's not sure a hundred percent yet, she can send her, her thoughts in.
Sure.
And then we can add it to ours.
Let's do it.
Do it that way. So let's, let's, uh, table this until our next meeting, which will be in the first meeting of February, and we'll go ahead and do it from there.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, staff.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, so we'll move on to our next item, which is going to be the strategic plan update, uh, for, uh, the city of Indio, and Mr. Nix, are you handling this for us, sir?
I am. Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, mayor, uh, Jonathan Nix is the city manager. I'll be providing an update and overview of our strategic plan. So strategic plan concept, I know the council is very familiar with this, but to provide a reminder to the, um, members of the community that are in the audience and maybe watching at home. Uh, the city manager led that effort in two thousand and twenty-two to describe the vision of what Indio wants to be, create a mission statement, um, establish some values and ethics, strategic areas of focus and goals and action items for the strategic plan. So I will not read all of this, but, uh, here's the vision, the mission, the ethics that were set up for Team Indio and those core values that we strive for every single day when we're providing services out to the community. And here are the areas of focus and goals that were established for that strategic plan. Uh, public safety, business and job growth, community infrastructure, beautification, downtown highway one eleven revitalization, festivals, events, arts and culture, community outreach, communication and participation, and of course, looking at our financial, environmental and operational excellence in everything that we do. So, um, when we look at all those action items under those goals, one hundred and fifty-nine items were created by this team. Um, so GSD, as our city manager likes to say, we get stuff done. So Team Indio, the city council, the staff here, the community, one hundred and eleven items completed. And also with that, another fifteen items that have made significant progress, so eighty percent of those things done. So very good job by Team Indio here. A few items still under progress. Majority of those items are those long-term construction items, um, that we're still working on. And if I may, I like to highlight a few of the things, um, in every area. Public safety, um, our chief's been doing a great job. Everyone remembers we got our public safety campus mostly done, got the new fire station, public services building, uh, dispatch building, still working on that, uh, second phase of that. Also in public safety, our emergency management, um, operations plan, uh, community emergency response team. For those that are watching, we have a three-day training coming up, February fourteenth through the sixteenth. I will be plugging things like that throughout the presentation and letting the community know if things are, are coming up. Also with our police department, um, posting positive stories like catching the Grinch and, um, using Santa Claus to help us do that and do a positive community outreach to all community members. Uh, business and job growth, you know, economic development, community development, the entire team, uh, working together. A lot of these things already mentioned earlier today, our shop local program, um, celebrating Shields' one hundred year anniversary, uh, looking at, uh, new businesses, doing ribbon cuttings, encouraging businesses throughout the community, um, very exciting things here in Indio. Also just, uh, I'm not going to read all these as well. South Indio at the, um, Canopy at Citrus, a lot of new businesses there, a lot of, of, of fine dining coming in. Also North Indio, at all these different shopping centers, having, um, nice eateries, uh, retail, even a new, um, uh, auto dealer at the auto mall. Community beautification, uh, we have the Indio Lindo program. We have the community members engaged in cleaning up, um, our community. There's a community cleanup also on this Saturday coming up. If you would like to volunteer for that, please contact us. That's coming up this Saturday. Uh, also you see K and R Car Wash, uh, taking, uh, advantage of our facade improvement, having our Indio signs, um, throughout the community, really sprucing up the place. Uh, community infrastructure, public works team and all of our, um, departments working together on a lot of different things. Park improvements, Miles Avenue Park, North Jackson, South Jackson, a lot of great improvements there, Dominguez Park. I don't know if Andrew's still sitting behind me. Pickleball courts, very exciting. Four at Patton Park, eight at Miles Avenue Park, so very exciting. A lot of people participating in that, in our community. Uh, Indio Sports Park in progress, under construction, mentioned earlier, we're going to get that one done, have, uh, that very nice amenity for our community. Road improvement, Tim Wassel and his team doing a lot of things out there. Here's some examples. Herbert Hoover getting that sidewalk done. You can see the before and after. Indio Boulevard repaving, even creating some new roads. Shields Avenue, it's all dirt, and a brand new road there. So a lot of great things done with road improvements. New facilities, um, hopefully this is exactly what it's going to look like when it's done. It's under construction right now behind us, the city hall, um, in about a year. Uh, Indio Library also under construction right now, hopefully done. Um, we're aiming for like fall, winter is what I'm going to say. Uh, golf course, um, clubhouse at the lights, uh, that's going to be done somewhere around late spring, early summer. So a lot of these projects coming to fruition uh, was planned out, well done, executed by this team here. Downtown highway one eleven realization, Desert Sun recognizing, um, Indio's realization, a lot of new businesses, uh, coming into town. Also shameless plug, ribbon cutting for Rosemary Hi-Fi this Friday, come on down. So Gambino's Tap House also featured there. Of course, people know about, um, our new center stage, a lot of activities and events there. We have our second Saturdays. We just had Latin Nova, um, perform on Saturday. Next movie's coming up. Remember the Titans, February sixth, come on down. Uh, Farmer's Market every single Saturday and Food Truck Fridays. Um, definitely have a lot of festivals, events, arts and culture. A lot of these things already mentioned by the council earlier, earlier, uh, barbecue festival. We had our first veterans five K run. Um, Independence Day block party this year, a lot of new things coming in. Um, Tamale Festival mentioned, the tree lighting ceremony, a lot of great celebrations for our community. And then, of course, the bigger festivals that are coming to town in a few months. These are actually the lineups for this April, so I just wanted to put a plug out there for that.
They know.
Yeah.
Yes, mayor, as mentioned, ticket sales are going well. Very much appreciated. Community outreach and participation, a combination of using technology and in-person engagement. Um, as mentioned, you know, we have a, had a graduate of our leadership academy here. We had two sessions in two thousand and twenty-four, went very well, refreshed of the website. Also mentioned, we got the Indio app up and running, definitely, um, available for some refinements and get, um, getting that stuff out there. IWA also getting outreach on committing to conserve. A lot of these things already mentioned earlier today in the council meeting.
We just got to see the logo for my Indio.
Yes, sir. And then also financial, environmental stability, operational excellence. You know, our finance department, looking at our finances, make sure we have a balanced budget, make sure we have the resources to provide these capital projects, construction, operations on an ongoing basis. Uh, great Team Indio, winning awards, doing trainings, coming together, celebrating, and always being polite, professional, and progressive as we do all those things. So what do we, where do we go from here? We've done a lot of great things. We've had eighty percent of these items, so we have to look towards the future and our next strategic plan. So to help with that, we're, uh, seeking a consultant to work with us. We did a request or proposal in November. In December, we received seven proposals. A lot of professional consultants want to work with this team on looking into the future. So, uh, we narrowed that down. We had staff from, uh, community development, economic development, finance, human resources, city manager's office. All get together, score these proposals, pick the top two, interviewed those folks, and what was selected was Barry Dunn to work with Team Indio. Uh, fifty-one years in the business, thirty-nine years serving state, local, and community service agencies, and they've done seventy projects very similar to this on organization development and strategic planning. So we're engaging them right now, getting them under contract, and we're going to begin that process, um, next month to engage the city council, community, and the staff on what that looks like. And here's just a little brief of their service model. They will be here in Indio, um, also doing, uh, different formats, community survey, some Zoom meetings, but also doing collaborative in-person meetings between the staff and the council and the community to figure out what we do next from here. That is my update. Available for any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Nix?
Can hardly wait. I think this is really terrific, um, good next step for us. We've accomplished an enormous. This is, this is where I say, thank you, staff. We couldn't have done this without you. We have moved forward at lightning speed and look forward to, um, the future and moving forward in that, in that similar fashion. So, um, I look forward to the process and the outcome and, and getting stuff done.
Mr. Ortiz, anything?
Nope, just congratulations to staff on, on the completion of a lot of these, um, items here. I think it, it's hard to keep up with how much is going on. And just, uh, seeing all, you know, that slideshow really reminded me of, you know, how, how hard you guys have been working throughout these couple of years, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Katron?
Well, the presentation's great, excuse me. The presentation's great, and it really shows a lot of accomplishment by the work of the team and everybody's effort. Everybody has something to do with it. We're real proud of that. Um, the parks, obviously with this big humongous sports park, we've been waiting for a while, uh, kind of reflects on every, all the other parks that we have. Um, and I know that, uh, Tim's team and Public Works is working diligently with our partners with, uh, Desert Recreation and Park District or DRD. But I think it's important that we like and keep doing that, because I know that this is going to be a really big animal with that sports park, and maintaining it is going to be important that we do with the same. Access to bathrooms is a constant challenge, and I think we need to, I know it's challenging because people don't respect them as just bathrooms, but we still need to figure out to keep them open, and I think we need to look as we move forward, because it's, it's never-ending, but we, we can't give up. But this shows good, and I think we're on the right track, obviously. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of great work that's being done by the staff and, and the community as a whole, and the investment that they did as a measure, you know, the tax measure that we did. So, I mean, that's the thankful part of being able to do this is because of the residents believing in us. So thank you for all the work that you and the staff have done, and thank you for bringing this to us. I do, uh, think though that, you know, as we build, we got to continue to maintain, and that's going to be our biggest issue is, is being able to maintain those parks and bring the parks and the other buildings back up to speed. Obviously, we're going to have a lot of new buildings. Comes with, uh, less cost at the start, but as time goes on, we really got to have a maintenance plan in place to be able to, be able to fund the parks and the buildings to make sure they continue to maintain, just like we did with the roads. We got so far behind the roads, now we're spending millions and millions of dollars just trying to catch up to where we should have been, so thank you for that. I do want to take one time while we were talking about buildings, too, on, um, I want to make the formation of a, a phase two, uh, ad hoc committee for the second phase of the, uh, police public station, safety station. Uh, you know, to look at the review of the current, in the past, we've had a couple of plans put in place, and we've changed them. The size has gone up and down. It's a very important part of the community. It's one of the things we, we sold the residents on measure X, was that we were going to, uh, do the public safety committee, so I want to make sure that it gets done right, make sure that anything we have goes forward with that. And to look at the budgets, grants, funding sources, physical plans, and also the timing, so to interact with, uh, the, the staff on that. So, and I'd like to put Mr. Katron on it. And so, um, it's part of one of the phases of the, being the mayor's authority, so I would like to, uh, make sure that happens. So if we could have that ad hoc, and it'll be in, in, uh, in activity until it's either completed or we decide to disband it.
And so what is the job of an ad hoc? Because I guess as we go through the process, one of the good things we, about the council in the last few years is that the information and the process and thinking and whatnot comes to us, and we're part, part of every stage of that process. And I, I don't think we have any ad, ad hocks, so I'm wondering why, why the shift?
The shift on, it's not really a shift. We just haven't had a reason to have some of the ad hocks. I believe this is an issue that needs to be addressed.
I agree.
Funding issues on it, and what it is, is being able to streamline. It's not, it's not going to come back to all, we're not going to make a decision without the rest of the council. It's just to make sure that this continues to move forward, and if there is an issue at hand, can we solve it quickly without it going into other processes? Funding, size, and that, and then bring it back.
Waiting for council meetings.
Right, waiting for council meetings, and does. Can we afford what we're, we're looking at, uh, building? Is it going to be smaller? You know, it's like city hall. We're, we're not building it for today. If we were building it today, it'd be half the size of what it is. We're building it for the future. So it's, uh, extra space and extra rooms and extra stuff that's in it, that to be able to do it with conference rooms and everything else. The same with the library. We're not building it for today. We're building it for the future. So I think we need to make sure that this is a process. I know there's a lot of our residents that are concerned about it. I, I hear it all the time in Heritage Palms. I was there not too long ago. They wanted to know when the rest of the police station and, and the rest of the public safety campus was going to get done, and so I want to make sure that we follow through. I think that's due to the, the residents that they need to. They see the other stuff going. So they're not worried about city hall, they're not worried about the library. We just need to make sure, and, and this is what I decided to do, and I've asked Mr. Katron to be a part of it.
You know, I, I agree with the focus. I agree that we need to move forward. I, uh, agree with everything that you said. I'm just not sure about the ad hoc. Um, I'm going to, to, you know, not agree with you, which I don't often do.
You have that prerogative.
At this point in time, mayor, um, just simply because I, I think it's so huge, it's so important to our community. It's so, so important, and the communication and the process and the knowledge is so, so important that I, I'm thinking study sessions or whatever. I think we all need to be in the loop, everything's.
We will all be in the loop on this thing. This is just to streamline any issues that might come about.
Then why can't we, why can't we do it, um, in, in the, in this format that we have been working? Then why can't we, why can't we do it in this format that we have been working in?
This is the format.
Not with an ad hoc?
It is today.
I might interject because we, staff received direction on how to proceed, and we've been moving quickly. So we are already at the point of ready to enter schematic phase. We've met with our bond council, with the consultants to determine what can we squeeze into this thing. If we're at the point now where we want to pause and hold back.
Not asking to pause, asking to be updated.
But if it expands, then we'll need to bring it back. For example, say, well, okay, it's a 30,000, 29,000 square foot building. We want to make it 50,000 square feet. Then we'll have to go back and go through the process of how do we fund that? I think it needs to go to the budget process, like what doesn't happen because we're going to do that. So it just can't be treated in isolation unless we took your direction and moved, and we're moving. If it's a pause, go back and, I think we're probably into June. The hearings are in June, May-June, probably a four to five month delay is my guess.
Just asking to see what we have planned.
So let me make a comment.
Sure.
What's wrong with it? We're not making decisions. It's an ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committees are designed for a specific task and they report back to the body. The body being you, Mrs. Councilwoman, and Mr. Councilwoman, the rest, there's nothing wrong with it.
I'm not saying there's something wrong with it. I like the idea and the concept that this information, just like when we, when this came up, Mayor, and you provided the information and, you know, I mean, you were instrumental in pulling this together. And we all heard that and we all got the same message and the same information at the same time. I like that methodology and I like that methodology. And so that's what I think we should continue. That's why, not saying there's anything wrong with an ad hoc, I just want to continue going in the same direction because by the time you get an ad hoc and then you guys meet and then it comes to council and back and forth, I just don't think that is the most streamlined approach.
The ad hoc is not there to stop anything. The ad hoc is to have two people as informative as they can at the same time and come back to the body. And the body can only be when there's a formal council meeting.
Yeah, I think, you know, Mr. Guitron here has spent a lot of time in that building. And he knows that staff really well. He'll be able to communicate any concerns from staff and get to the bottom of any issues that there might be with any designs. I know it might still take us a little while, but it's a huge investment.
Yes.
And I do want to make sure that we get it right on this time. Right now, we're dealing with the consequences of not getting it right last time, right?
Yep.
And so I'm okay with the ad hoc, again, all the final decisions will come to us. But I also am concerned that, you know, if we're waiting for two weeks every time we have that discussion, it can slow us down, especially if we're going to be looking at any adjustments in the future. I'm okay with it.
Thank you.
If I can just make a, there's your majority. If I can make a comment going back because I just, on something you said, Councilmember. I mean, there's been a whole lot of discussions and I remember I was mayor when we had some of these discussions. And so I guess that's my passion for ensuring the project progresses, progresses, but correctly and that the correct information gets out there. Respectfully, Mayor, and to my colleagues, respectfully, I do not support the ad hoc committee.
Okay, thank you. With that, thank you, Mr. Nix. Any other questions to Mr. Nix? Thank you, Jonathan, for your report. With that, we'll move on to item, that was a receiving file. We'll move on to item number 12, which is public comment. Item's not on the agenda. Do we have anything, Sabdi, or anybody wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have Gil Marujo in the audience.
Okay.
Again, Happy New Year. I hope it's going to be a good year. Listen, I just finished hearing and the situation dealing with the public safety campus. It's very important that you continue with that. It's very important that you have an ad hoc committee, only because of the fact that it doesn't interfere with your timeline. But it does bring up the honesty and communication that this strategic plan has embedded into the city of Indio. If you're honest and you're communicative and you're willing to work with people, that's what's important now. Because what I understood at the very beginning, when we first heard about the public safety campus, it was only going to be a Phase One, complete, total budget, get it done. And all of a sudden, what happens? We hear through the grapevine, at least I did, that, oh, we're going to have a Phase Two. Why are we having a Phase Two when we were only going to have a Phase One? Get it completed. Then we started hearing the rationale about the phase and about the money and so forth. The number one statement that was put up in the strategic plan was, number one, public safety. And that's what we need. And we need to get this thing completed. You have a City Hall that's going to get completed. You may even have a library completed before we even get the public safety headquarters, police headquarters completed. Money is of the essence now because for every year that you fall through or fail to get this thing done, it's just going to cost more, especially when the budget was issued back then. Then all of a sudden, we find ourselves in this situation. So I for one agree that there should be a study session. Or if anything, there should be somewhere that this communication between the city manager and the council can come together and come to with a recommended design. I don't know what the amount of budget that's been, you know, provided up to date, nor do I know the amount of square footage that they intend to bill. But 2025, we're here. And if we hold off another year, it's just going to cost more. You know it's going to cost more. So I'm of the essence that, one, public safety was the number one issue that I saw up there right off the bat. And that was supposed to be taken care of through the tax and through the budgeting, which I understood it to be clear. But at the same time, all of a sudden, I see that the walls come up around the structure. That tells me that you're completed, that you had no intention of having it done. Because if you had the intention of getting the Phase Two, those walls shouldn't have come up because you're going to have to break them or, you know, knock them down or find another access to build the headquarters. So with that being said, it's important and imperative that we do this right. We're 2025. I don't want to be back here at the end of the year saying what happened or where we're at. I need some update at least. Give us an update of where we're at. And there was a good discussion, by the way. I enjoyed the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marullo.
I would like to say something or ask. Actually, I would like to ask my colleagues a question. I so totally agree of the importance of that facility. But I think there's some information that we all got and heard differently. And I think as a baseline, because I remember the conversation. I've gone back and looked at the planning commission. I've looked at the meeting. And I guess I would like to set the record straight at some point. I don't know how you guys feel. Move forward. Do whatever we need to do to get it done. And I love the idea of a study session because then everybody hears it, but that's a separate issue. I guess I would like to set the record straight with the decisions that were made, when they were made, just so that we're hearing, there's too much angst in this community for information on this, such an important thing in our community. And I would like to just be able to say, this is, set the record straight for the information that we decided on when I was mayor, when we heard the presentations, when we had the planning commission. And if that's not too much trouble, you know, I don't know if you guys agree with me, but that's just my two cents. And I'm asking if you do agree or if you think it's the right thing to do.
And you're talking about if it's the right thing to do to?
To bring this, to bring the information forward. If you go back and look at the information, there has been misinformation. We all support this and we supported this in a timely fashion, but there was an approach. There was a planning commission decision. There was a decision that we all made as council. And I think it's different than the perception. And for me personally, I'd like to set the record straight that says, that said, these are the decisions, these are the timelines. And now, because we continue to be so supportive of this, we're accelerating this effort. But in the process of accelerating this effort, it is different than the decision that we made two or three years ago.
If there is a work session, we could bring that back because we've heard that a few times. This is another where, and this is even before my time, so I'm not trying to defend myself or previous city managers, but there was never going to be a Phase Two immediately following Phase One. The walls are an example. The fact that we could have, if this building, if the headquarters building was going to be built immediately following the rest of the buildings, we're talking about an additional cost of three or four or five million dollars. It was from day one, the planning commission in this room, the city council in this room, made the decision not to build the headquarters building. That has changed now, but we can't go back to try to push the largest building that we could ever afford or the fact that somehow we weren't transparent or we're trying to hide something. But that's what was just said, and that's back to the Mayor Protem's comment, that's what swirls around. It's just not accurate. If you want to go back and watch the planning commission, when this thing was approved, it was very obvious of what was planned. So if the misinformation is somehow now being twisted for some other purpose, please don't include staff in that discussion. We're trying to work under the direction you provided. This building is about to go to construction documents through the schematic process. What you're asking now is to go back. We'll step back. We'll need to include it in the budget process. We'll need to rework our finances because obviously what the intent is, is to expand the size of the building beyond the resources we have.
Mr. Montgomery, we have not made that decision. We have not looked. We're asking to see what it is that's being presented. And I don't see that being a problem before it gets presented.
Absolutely.
That's all we're asking for. And the miscommunication, Mr. Marullo has the right to say what he feels. That's the public process.
Sure.
But you haven't heard from the council blaming anybody for anything. All we want to do is make sure that this process goes forward, that we're able to provide a quality building that will go into the future under something we can afford. Absolutely.
Perfect.
But Mr. Marullo does have that right to say what he has to say. And we are not blaming staff or anything else. We know how important this building is. We just want to make sure it gets right. But size and variance and that is just something we'd like to see. And if it does go back and we don't think it's done, then that's something the council can go back. But we're not asking anybody to stop. We just like to see it before it gets presented to us. We're sitting on the dais and everything's getting ready to be drawn and do that. That's all I'm asking. So.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would encourage us to continue with public comment. And we can have certainly brief responses to comments that are made, but this item has not been agendaized.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Mayor, I do have two additional public comments. I have Al Mesa and followed by Tiffany Lobe.
Mr. Mason?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Anyway, Happy New Year. Then, Ben, Happy New Year's again. We have something here. We're going to go back about 24 years ago when I was the chair for the street, where we're going to renew the streets. And that team, Freddie Hall and part of the rest of the team, Freddie Hall was the mayor. And we go over and we make, check prices, how much it was going to cost. We spent hundreds of hours checking the prices, how much is every street. We measure streets. We go through the whole process on it. And I walk like crazy, asking people that we were going to have a tax for the streets. And we're going to do every street in Indio, no matter where the street was, we're going to renew the streets, okay? We were going to make Indio look good. And, you know, we walk, yes, two weeks ago, I was in Virginia and I was talking to Benjamin. And we were talking about it, the promises, when we made so many promises. And I go back to Indio 55 years ago and I used to like Indio downtown more than what I like it right now 53 years ago. I used to love it in that time. But anyway, we promised all those things back and forth and we don't seem to. A lady called me the other day and he told me, "We Tron Chiquito was here in my house asking me for the vote for Mr. We Tron Tenor." I said, "Yeah, okay." So, you know, and I say, "So what happened, Lupe?" She said, "You know, they haven't, they haven't cleared my street for a whole month and you were here in my house promising this BS and this other BS." And I say, "Well, Lupe," I say, "I want to tell Ben We Tron to go and talk to you before you vote for him because I'm not running. He's running." And I say, "And I know I made the promises," I say, "but I was talking about what I was promised at the same time. And that time and the thing is what we promised." Thing changed. Streets cost a lot more money because what is going on? We've been 23 years later, for the time we started doing the streets, prices changed and everything else. We haven't finished doing it. And I hope I will be alive for the time we finish doing it, like I've been asking for a lot of things. And, you know, I know that I am a pain in the ass to you guys and I understand that. I never did say nothing. But I just wanted to tell you guys that some of the time, when I'm saying something, I say it because it's something promised. And I've been with every city council since I was 18 years old here, coming to the city council. And everybody give you a lot of BS to on it back and forth. There was promise and it never happened. So I hope in days happen. And Elaine, I agree with you. I still got six of my, used to be my Arabian thing that we used to, I used to wear six days a week, so I have all my things in the closet. And the parade was beautiful. And the fair is, was completely changed in those years. Thank you very much and I'm sorry.
Happy New Year, Al. Next?
Tiffany? Good evening, Mayor, Council, and especially to City Manager Montgomery. I'm Tiffany LeBeau and I wanted to actually thank him for responding to an email that I'd actually sent to everyone on the council. I'm here because I'm an animal advocate and I've been going around to all the city councils at the beginning of the year because we, obviously, Indio has been very progressive with their spay and neuter initiatives and that's extremely gratifying. Part of the issue, I think, for every city is that the, what the county is calling the mandatory licensing of kennels and catteries, which I, in my mind, it means that there is a quote-unquote backyard breeding ban. Meaning that if there are more than five animals in any dwelling at one time, that it is mandatory by Riverside County Department of Animal Services, who the city of Indio contracts with, that they must, they must get a kennel license. And I know that most people don't even know that. It's never advertised, obviously. I think that enforcement is extremely important with this because unfortunately, this is a byproduct of the pet overpopulation we've been seeing years coming on after the pandemic. So I'm just here to say, I'm wondering if the city would begin an awareness campaign or something, maybe on indio.org, under the animal services heading that says, "Remember, if you have more than five pets, you need a kennel license." I just, I'm hoping that all the cities will dissuade people from this backyard breeding. You go on Craigslist and, you know, all the other sites where you can purchase things. And, you know, there's puppies and kittens for sale and they're not spayed or neutered. And so this whole thing just continues. And so anyway, that's just something that I'm hoping that council will consider in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor.
I have no other comments, Mayor.
Okay, then we're ending our meeting. We'd like to do a moment of silence for Deputy Timothy Carlu and also for all those affected by the fires in LA. Could do a moment of silence, please? All right, with that, we will adjourn our meeting until our next meeting, February 5th, 2025. Have a great rest of your night and be safe. Thank you for attending.